Welcome to the September 30th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Devine, Friedman, Najarian, here, Weaver, Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Laura Friedman.
Please rise and join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please remain standing for today's invocation. Let us join in prayer for our city as we ask for guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that you look after our sons and daughters who serve in our military and ask that you bring them home safe. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. May we have the report, Mr. Clerk?
The agenda for the September 30th, 2014 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 25th, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next?
3A, Presentations and Appointments, Agenda Preview for Meeting of Tuesday, October 17, 2014.
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Mayor Sinanian, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for October 7th, we have no business agenda items. We do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council that afternoon to commence at 3:00 PM, and it's Director of Public Works, Pedestrian Safety Improvement. That evening for the City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have one item under consent, Director of Library Arts and Culture regarding grant funds for the Meeting Customers at Point of Need project. And under Action Items, we have Director of Community Development, this is regarding Title 30 of the GMC, this is regarding the Historic District Overlay Zone Design Review Authority. Chief of Police Enforcement Aviation Services for Maintenance Services and Repairs to Joint Air Support Unit helicopters between the cities of Glendale and Burbank. Director of Public Works and Community Development, this is regarding Proposition 84, Green Streets Demonstration Project. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
3B, Proclamation Designating the Month of October 2014 as Walkover Pedestrian Safety Month.
Great. And we have a proclamation for Walkover, and who will be receiving it?
All spread out so you can be on TV.
Thank you.
You're all on.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, members of council and city staff. My name is Mary Agajanian. I'm a senior at Clark Magda High School and a member of the Glendale Unified School District's Student Advisory Committee. I am honored to accept the proclamation on behalf of the children and residents of the city of Glendale. This is Glendale's sixth year participating in this annual event, which is sponsored by the city's Safe Routes to School Program, GUSD, the Glendale Council PTA, and Walk Bike Glendale. We have 34 schools walking to school on October 8th. This annual event encourages students and families to commit to a healthy lifestyle by walking to school every day. It also raises awareness about the importance of both pedestrian and driver's safety. Some examples of the activities that will occur on October 8th include students, parents, teachers, and community volunteers meeting at parks and walking as groups to schools, many organized walking school buses, Glendale Fire Department cheering on students, Glendale Police Department K-9 dogs, walking with students at John Muir and Balboa Elementary Schools, and lots of fresh air and smiling faces all over Glendale and Locker Center. If you haven't committed to come out and walk with us yet, it's not too late. Wednesday, October 8th, come walk to school with the children of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Isabella Soto, and I am a student from John Muir Elementary School. I have with me some students from my school, as well as Ms. Shari Janian, the principal, and Ms. Teens, our assistant principal. I would like to take this opportunity to invite you all to Walktober, October 8th at 8:30 AM. Students at John Muir celebrate diversity and community involvement by walking and holding international flags like we are right now. This is a nationwide event that our school's PTA is sponsoring annually. We will meet at 8:30 AM on October 8th at two different starting points, Adams Mini Park and Burger King located at the corner of Cherry Chase in Colorado. We will start our walk at 8:40 AM waving our flags and enjoying the walk with each other and the community members. So we hope you can join us and enjoy this event with us, our families and community members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, this is an excellent, excellent event that takes place consecutively now for the sixth year. And last year, I walked my daughter to Mark Keppel Elementary School. This year, I'm going to walk both my daughter and my son to the same school. I encourage everyone else to participate and really think of it as us promoting a certain lifestyle. There are other issues involved, like Ms. Agajanian mentioned promoting safety, pedestrian and cyclist safety, which is very important. And I hate to interject this issue, but just in the last two weeks, we've had two high-profile incidents, one of them with a fatal outcome. And this is the kind of thing, in part, which we're trying to avoid by promoting a healthy lifestyle of walking and doing physical activities. So we have a proclamation that I'd like to read for you and I would like to present to you. And it goes, "Whereas the month of October is our opportunity to create awareness about pedestrian safety and to evaluate the walking conditions in Glendale, and whereas walking is proven to decrease chronic health conditions and improve overall health, and walking to school and other destinations offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. And whereas a critical role of Walkover is to teach our community about the health and environmental benefits of walking and how to do so safely, and whereas Glendale's Safe Routes to School Program needs the support of our community to enable our children to safely walk and bike, now therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of October 2014 as Walkover, Walk to School and Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of all our citizens this month and throughout the year."
Thank you so much, and we truly look forward to seeing you during our Walkover Day. Thank you.
I was going to say, okay, kids, go do your homework. Bye.
And now we are allowed to leave.
Yes. What did he say, we're allowed to leave? I don't know who he is, but I really like him. You couldn't see, but he was actually entertaining us throughout the presentation.
Last point.
Yeah. All right. What's next?
3C, Proclamation for Glendale Water and Power Hundred Years of Reliable Water Service, presented by Rita Haji Manukian from LA County Supervisor Michael D. Antonovich's office and Tim Warley from American Waterworks Association.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Supervisor Mike Antonovich. As a Glendale resident, the supervisor certainly appreciates the water and the power that you provide, so commemorating the importance of today on your 100th anniversary, I'd love a Glendale Water and Power representative to accept this certificate and wish you many, many years of clean water and good energy. And thank you very much, and it was a pleasure to be here. And I'm going to go, too.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and members of the council. As previously mentioned, I am Tim Warley. I'm Executive Director of the California Nevada Section of the American Waterworks Association. We have a long name, so most people in the professional water community know us as AWWA. We're very well-known since the association has been around since 1881. It is the oldest and longest or most comprehensive organization serving the professional water community. I'm here to recognize the city, and in particular, Glendale Water and Power, for 100 years of water and power, but also 100 years of membership in the American Waterworks Association. This is truly a milestone in your commitment to safe and reliable drinking water for the residents of your city. Just to reflect for a moment on some of the facts about 1914, when Glendale joined AWWA. The 1910 census reported that the population of Glendale was about 2,700 people. 10 years later, it had climbed almost five-fold to over 7,000 people. So in 1914, we could estimate approximately 7,000 residents of the city. Your big neighbor to the west had just completed its first aqueduct to bring water from the Owens Valley in 1914. 1914 was just six years after the first full-scale application of chlorine to disinfect drinking water supplies in Boonton, New Jersey, starting a revolution in drinking water treatment and a rapid decline in diseases such as typhoid fever that previously had caused deaths in this country by the thousands and tens of thousands. AWWA, as an association, had been around for 25 years, but the California Nevada Section, whom I work for now, would not be organized for another six years until 1920. In short, what I'm trying to say is that your city is a recognized leader in the area of safe drinking water. That legacy continues today, as you, the City Council here, made a courageous commitment to treat your well water to remove chromium VI. Thanks to Ramon Abueg and his predecessors, the entire state has benefited from the research on chromium VI treatment conducted here in the city of Glendale. So on behalf of the American Waterworks Association, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the city of Glendale and, in particular, the Glendale Water and Power for 100 years of membership in our association, the American Waterworks Association. Our members thank you for your outstanding contribution to our profession. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have, oh, yes, not quite yet, though. We have our own proclamation for GWP on this momentous occasion, 100 years of providing water and power. And I'd like to read it and ask Councilmember Weaver to present it to Mr. Abueg. Whereas in 1914, Glendale Power and Light added a water operation to serve the complete utility of our residents and businesses, and whereas today, 100 years later, the city's water utility as part of Glendale Water and Power continues to faithfully serve the residents, businesses, and visitors of the city by providing safe, reliable, efficient, and cost-effective water, which contributes to the well-being of our community. And whereas GWP Water annually distributes over 9 billion gallons of this most basic and essential resource to an estimated 34,000 homes and businesses. And whereas Glendale Water and Power remains a leader in advancing technologies to remove contaminants from local groundwater sources to deliver safe drinking water that meets or exceeds state and federal drinking water quality standards, now therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim September 30th, 2014, GWP Water Utility Centennial, and recognize Glendale Water and Power's water utility on the occasion of its 100th anniversary, and call the observance to the attention of our citizens. Thank you. Yeah, would you say a few words?
I want to thank you, Mayor Sinanian, City Councilmembers, for recognizing us for 100 years. Also want to acknowledge, we have some of our staff here to help us commemorate this day, and I want to acknowledge them for their hard work. They've been part of this as much as we have in management. I also want to thank Mr. Warley and Ms. Haji Manukian, I think she left, and truly appreciate the recognition. Thank you very much.
Can the GWP employees stand up so that we can properly acknowledge you all? And thank you.
Thank you once again. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
3D, Presentations for the Canines in the Park.
Yes, we have quite a presentation. It's on its way.
Good evening. This is, my name is Officer Feeley, and this is Officer Schultis, and this is his canine partner, Idol. And we're here to invite everybody here and everyone at home, of course, to our six-annual Glendale Canines in the Park event, which is October 11th from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Verdugo Park. It's a great day, family-oriented, fun-filled, pet-friendly, so you could bring your dogs as long as they're on a leash. We'll have a low-cost pet vaccination clinic for them. We'll have a pet adoption fair through the Pasadena Humane Society as well, and live police canine demonstrations. So you'll be able to see him and a bunch of other canines in action. We'll have great raffle prizes, good food, a lot of fun stuff for the kids as well. We'll have a climbing rock wall, we'll have bouncers, face painters, and because it is close to Halloween, we'll have a costume contest for the pets. So if you bring your pet in costume, you could win a great prize. It's a great day, again, October 11th, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Verdugo Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great. Next?
3, Appointment of Sarojini Lal as a Member of the Commission on the Status of Women, nominee of Councilmember Devine.
While, yes, while Councilmember Devine is not here, Councilmember Friedman is going to take care of this.
Yeah, I believe that Ms. Lal will be a wonderful addition to the commission, and I would like to move 3E.
Second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Congratulations to Ms. Sarojini Lal. I'm sure she's going to be a great contribution to the Commission on the Status of Women. Next item, please?
Consent items, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I'm going to move the consent calendar at four.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item?
Under City Council Staff Comments, five.
Would like to, yes, Ms. Friedman?
Just a few events that I attended this week. First of all, along with Councilmember Najarian and Devine, I attended the beginning of the LA Metro and White Walk Glendale's bike ride that they had on Saturday, starting at the Glendale train station and going around the city. It was very well-attended. They probably had about 80 people, a lot of which, of whom, were not Glendale residents, many of whom were, I'd say the majority were, but some weren't. So it's nice to be a tourist attraction for cyclists from around the region. I know that the ride went very well and everybody had a great time. I saw a lot of very happy Facebook postings throughout the day. So congratulations to Walk Bike Glendale. They do a lot of great work in the city. I also attended Crescent Valley Weekly's Finest of 2014 Festival they held in Duke Magian Park. I think it's the fifth year they've been holding this festival, where local restaurants, eateries from the northern part of the city get to show off their products. And these are only the companies, I think, who win the best of Glendale, or the best of, I guess, the Foothill region it would be. And it was a great group. It was very well-attended. Our own Duke Magian Park Vineyard was pouring some of their vintage, so we got to taste the Duke Magian Park wine, which is excellent. They're looking at expanding their vineyard, so hopefully we can work with them to take over a larger area. There's a part that the county owns that's a big flat something. I don't exactly know what it is, but they were saying that they thought that would be a great place to have their new vineyard. Maybe we could talk to Michael Antonovich in the county and try to get that big piece of land, which doesn't need to be used for anything, dedicated to the vineyard. Next, on Sunday, I think it was, Sunday night, I attended the annual award ceremony given by Tree People, which is a Los Angeles County-based organization that plants trees and does other sorts of ecological work around Los Angeles County. Extremely well-attended. They raised a lot of money. In fact, they had one person there who donated anonymously a million dollars. So look for great things from Tree People. I believe that they were involved in our Riverwalk project. Does anybody know for sure? I think that they had something to do with Riverwalk, with some of the plantings at that park, but they're a great organization. Congratulations to them. I attended in Pasadena the annual Wiggle Walk for the Pasadena Humane Society, which raises money for their humane society every year. Extremely well-attended event. They must have had 600, 700 people there and their dogs. Our own Glendale K-9 Division was there to give canine displays. There were people from all over the area, very, very well-attended. I know that they raised a lot of money. Pasadena Humane works with us in terms of animal control. They're a wonderful facility. Their goal is to one day be a no-kill shelter. They're not quite there yet, but that's the goal. They do a lot of outreach, a lot of adoption, and I hope that the money that they raised goes to helping to save more of our animals around this area. Lastly, I want the public to know that last week I was sworn in as the incoming president, the new president for the Independent Cities Association, which is an organization, a nonprofit, that represents the so-called independent cities of Los Angeles County, and that's cities that generally have their own police or fire departments, unlike contract cities, which contract out for police and fire and a lot of their other services. It's right now 44 cities. We will be expanding that, I think, over the next year. Cities like San Diego have expressed interest in joining, although in the past, we've been Los Angeles County-based. We're looking to expand that. All of the independent cities share public safety, being within our city functions, and it's important that we communicate, that we share our resources, that we work together on advocacy in Sacramento and education for our members. I'm very proud to be at the helm of this organization and look forward to a great year with them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman? Yes, Mr. Weaver?
There's one thing. Over the past few months, I've been getting quite frustrated, and I gather Planning Division is frustrated, too. And I had cause to, a couple times, go over and try to help residents on window replacements. Planning says they get them all week, every single week. People coming in, what can I do on my windows? And the guidelines were put in back in '09. I think it can't hurt for us to take another look at those guidelines for windows. I'm not talking about the historic districts, historic houses, or those that are contributing. I'm talking about others. Because all the ones that, I was over there trying to help the residents and very frustrated in the amount of thousands of dollars that they were going to have to spend on windows that were put in back in the '60s, made out of aluminum, they just don't look good. So I think we ought to, somebody else concur with me. Take a look in.
I will concur with you. I was actually going to speak about the same issue and ask our sitting manager to include this issue in the broader plan that I believe, or a report that you're going to submit with respect to what we're doing with the city and expansion and maybe not expansion, and if that fits, because there's an immense amount of discomfort and frustration out in the community, and I'm specifically referring about, you know, to people who have purchased homes and are now all of a sudden facing new notices about their windows, and these people are not at fault, they have done nothing wrong, they've violated no statute, no ordinance, and all of a sudden, they're facing this unpleasant surprise, to put it mildly. So if we can...
The discussion on neighborhood compatibility, specifically as it pertains to turf, that the council's asked to come back, we'll wrap this in. It's generally in terms of aesthetics and property ownership and neighborhood compatibility are the issues that kind of tie together. We'll be bringing that back before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Weaver's, are you done?
That's it.
Okay. I did attend several events, and this Saturday, as Councilmember Friedman said, the tour of Glendale, which was very well-attended and sponsored by Metro. And in my opening remarks, I said Metro is much more than building subways and freeways and bus lanes and designing roadways and light rail. We also do bikes and pedestrian systems. But this morning, I was building a subway. I was able to have the honor of attending the groundbreaking of the Downtown Regional Connector Subway with the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Anthony Fox, Mayor Garcetti, and our five county supervisors. It is going to be a subway in the downtown region, which will connect all the existing subways, so you could take a ride from Long Beach all the way to Azusa without getting out of the train. You can go from the Red Line all the way to East LA without getting out of the train. This is going to be a very well-received subway, and we were able to break ground today downtown, and it should be done in about three years. So that was my excitement today, and I just wanted to share that with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian, and I would love to see the day when we have a subway station in Glendale where we can actually take the train from here to Azusa and East LA and South LA and all parts of LA.
You mean like the streetcars back in the '40s?
That would be great, Mr. Weaver. That would be very, very nice, and it would certainly, certainly fall into this culture of, you know, sort of pedestrian, non-commuting-by-using-our-own-cars culture that we're trying to promote. I think we all recognize that that's the future, that's the healthy way of living. I have some announcements. On September 25th, I attended the Glendale Adventist Medical Center's Acute Rehab Unit 50th Anniversary, 50 years of helping people with... 50th anniversary, fifty years of helping people with horrible disabilities resulting from a variety of reasons, helping those people regain, you know, a degree of quality of life and regain their ability to really live in a meaningful way. So I congratulate them once again on this monumental achievement, fifty years of doing this, thousands of people that have benefited from this. On Saturday, I noticed that, let me backtrack a little bit. If you all remember, a few months ago, maybe it's been probably six months now, our city sponsored a really great effort to beautify the really not very pretty utility boxes in downtown Glendale. And we employed, you know, great local artists and were very pleased with the results. I think we all thought that our downtown looked so much better as a result of this relatively minor effort, didn't require that many resources. And as I was driving home on Sanchez towards Brand Boulevard, if you know, that's the narrowest strip of road that's right next to the freeway, I noticed that one of the utility boxes was sort of painted over, so I couldn't tell if it was vandalized or vandalized and then painted over. So my, you know, my hope would be that we can find out what happened and fix it. If, you know, if I know it may require some resources, you know, I'll raise the money or I'm sure it's not that much money. And just call on our residents not to do that. I hope it's not our residents, and if it's someone outside the city, please don't do that to our city, or, you know, this is meant to make our city beautiful. So that's my second point. Third point is, during my swearing-in and even when I got elected, I raised the issue of term limits, and I was happy to hear Mr. Najarian express some support for it. I want to raise that issue of the term limits to a level of discussion by the council, so I need someone to support me on this.
I'll support that.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. So let's put that on the agenda sometime very soon. And now, I believe Ms. Beers has a very interesting announcement to make.
Quecota.
I'm told I'm supposed to wear this sideways, Mayor Sinanian, to look appropriate, but I don't know. So you all can put your hats on as well. Mayor Sinanian, members of the City Council. Good evening. My name's Yasmin Beers, Assistant City Manager, but don't hold me to this, please, down the line. And I am the proud team captain for Team Ochoa, our very own City Manager Scott Ochoa, who is one of our soldiers for the Army of Pink this year. Army of Pink, what is that? It raises awareness about breast cancer and the importance of getting screened routinely, and that is so very important. It also raises awareness about local resources at Glendale Adventist Medical Center's nationally awarded cancer center. Army, this campaign is very near and dear to my heart. Any campaign regarding breast cancer awareness is near and dear to my heart. My mom was diagnosed with breast cancer twelve years ago, and she's been cancer-free for the last eleven years, due to the fact that it was detected, I think, early, and we were able to deal with it. So anything doing to do with breast cancer awareness or cancer in general is definitely close to home for myself and my family. So when I was asked to be the team captain for Team Ochoa, I said, absolutely, I'll join in. So if you can join us in the fight against breast cancer and vote, not once, but please vote multiple times.
Early and often.
Yes, throughout the month of October, and it starts tomorrow, October 1st, for Scott Ochoa. You can cast your vote at a number of places, but first and foremost, it's glendaleadvenus.com/armyofpinkocha. Let me repeat, glendaleadvenus.com/armyofpinkocha. And you can also follow Team Ochoa on Twitter. We also have information that will start going out as of today, and it's...
Which is a very scary thought, by the way.
Scott Hearts Pink. So we do have a Twitter account, Scott Hearts Pink. And you're all wearing the caps or holding the caps close to your heart, as Mr. Weaver is, and Mr. Najarian is holding it up for me. So with that, there are other folks who are also in this campaign.
Since you may be a little prejudiced.
Yes.
A little biased towards a certain someone, I thought I'm not. I'll just point out that the other individuals who are involved in this year's effort are our own Lieutenant Tim Feeley, Glendale Police Department, that is going to look great in pink, Deputy Chief Greg Fish, the Archbishop of the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church. He's going to be part of it. Greg Krikorian, I'm sure the memo went throughout, you know, went out throughout the Glendale Unified School District to support him. I hope we have more employees.
Actually, we have more, I think they may have more employees, but we can, we have plans to reach out to Mr. Krikorian. Everybody save the honorable and reverend Archbishop, I think, is well within our sights.
That's a good idea. And of course, we have a doctor. We have Harlan Gibbs from the Glendale Adventist Medical Center's Emergency Department, which is, I think, very symbolic. But this is, all jokes aside, of course, this is a very, very important issue that touches each one of us, each one of us. It's not a gender-specific issue, because women in our lives, and we all have women in our lives, whether it's our mothers, our sisters, our wives, our daughters, are touched upon this. There's not a single one of us in this room, I'll bet my life, there's not a single one of us who has not come into contact with this issue throughout their life. So let's support this. You said they can vote as many times as they want?
As many times as they want. That's what's so fantastic about this, so literally if someone...
Strange and fantastic.
Yes.
Yes.
We're going Chicago-style on this.
Absolutely.
Early and often.
Vote often, and vote for Scott Ochoa.
There you go.
In some countries, they call it the voting carousel.
Kind of come up with a plan here.
Right, great. I hope everyone supports it, everyone gets engaged, and everyone participates.
Thank you, Mayor Sinanian.
Thank you. And what do we have next, Mr. Clerk?
Six community event announcements, three minutes.
Goodness. And we'll start with Mr. Zavon Kazazian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Sinanian, members of the City Council, City Manager, staff, and the public at large. Battalion Chief Gully and I, Zavon Kazazian, are here to invite the public to come and witness the wonderful men and women of the Glendale Fire Department receive awards and volunteers. And this is an event that's sponsored by the Glendale Fire Department and the Glendale Sunrise Rotary. And we are delighted to say the fact that this is our sixth year that we're doing it together jointly, and it's bringing a success. Every year, it seems like we have more and more people joining us, and that's why I'm going to follow this year with Scott Ochoa's dictum that says, "Buy tickets early and often." And so, once you buy one ticket, buy another one. Give it away to somebody who will come and enjoy it. Please come and enjoy it. The key factor that I would like to communicate is, all the money that's raised is spent on the event. And the Fire Department doesn't make any money, Glendale Sunrise Rotary doesn't make any money, and any surplus money that we have from the event, we give it out as scholarships for cadets of the Glendale Fire Department. And we have done a tremendous job of making sure the fact that we always have enough money to buy boots, clothing, and I'll have, I mean, Battalion Chief Gully should say more about it, but it's an event that is fun, it is enjoyable, and it's something that you'll feel good about it, because we'll have some videos of some of the tremendous work that the Glendale Fire Department does.
Yes, Ron Gully, B Shift Battalion Chief, this is a great event to see the faces of the personnel, not only in the Fire Department, but the community and city employees this year that did some great work out there protecting our community. It's, you know, they're very humble, and they don't always like to be recognized for this, but it is a very good event for that, and you'll see some of the things that took place over the last year. Be nice to see you all there.
Now, in addition to the Glendale Fire Department's awards for the members of the Glendale Fire Department, the men and women, and the volunteers, Glendale Sunrise Rotary has one award that presents at this event, and it's the Service Above Self, and it is something that an individual we recognize who has done a lot in the community, and he has to be a member, cannot be a member of the Glendale Fire Department, cannot be a member of the Glendale City, cannot be a member of the Glendale Sunrise Rotary. And this year, we're honoring Johnny Harrison of the Glendale Lexus. Johnny has been a wonderful member of the community here, has done a lot of good work, and would love to recognize him, so we're going to be recognizing him on October 15th. The event starts about 11:30, and we are very prompt. We finish it by 1:30, because we know everybody's got to go back to work. So please join us. We'd love to have everybody there. We'd love to see everybody from the City Council there, and if you have any questions, we are going to have some flyers here, or you go to Glendale Fire Department's website, and you will be able to reach us. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazazian, Chief Gully, thank you. Ron Farina, followed by Arti Kasahin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and senior management staff. My name is Ron Farina. I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter. I'm here to invite yourselves and the entire community to our 23rd Annual Fritz Coleman Comedy Night. I think it's one of those great traditions that still goes on here in the city of Glendale. Here to pitch it with me is Fritz Coleman, so I'd like to ask him to please run our Fritz Coleman service announcement.
Hi, everybody. It's your old friend Fritz Coleman from NBC4. Once again, I find myself addressing the power structure of the city of Glendale with this important announcement, an important request. Once again, I'm asking you to help me support the Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter of the American Red Cross. It is our 23rd annual comedy benefit, Sunday, October 12th, at 7:00, at the gorgeous Glendale Center Theater over there on North Orange Street. Twenty-three years we've been bringing comedy to this community. We can't stop now, and we need your help. The wonderful thing about helping the Red Cross is, it requires no salesmanship. Every week, there is another story about how the Red Cross has sailed into people's lives at the peak of tragedy to help make the transition to calmer times better. For instance, the Napa Valley Quick. It really is important for us to continue our helping. We're going to do it this year, Sunday, October 12th, at 7:00 at the Glendale Center Theater. There's an easy way to buy tickets, you do it online. Go to american redcross.org/Glendale. American dot redcross dot org slash Glendale. Tickets are $25, but if you buy them online before October 1st, they're only $20 apiece. And for an additional charge, you can get guaranteed VIP seats that includes a pre-show dinner at the Phoenisha Restaurant, who has been our sponsor for many years, and we love them to death, and it's a delicious meal and a great way for you to socialize and have some fun before our evening fun starts. We're going to have some of the best comics in the business, television and around the world. Please join us again. It'll be Sunday, October 12th, at 7:00 at the Glendale Center Theater. Do it for our friends at the Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter of the American Red Cross. And ahead of time, I'm saying, I love you.
Thank you, Fritz. I just wanted to mention that we're going to keep our ticket prices at $20 for probably the next week or so, so encourage everybody to go out and buy a ticket and bring a best friend. If you've never been to the event, Fritz lines up about four stand-up comics each time, and they're always a surprise. Some of them you'll know, some of them are up and coming, some of them are veteran, but it's a fun, fun event. And the Glendale Center Theater is kind of a unique theater in the round event, so it's a great seat wherever you are. So thank you, one and all, and thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Farina, and thank you, Fritz Coleman. And Arti Kasahin?
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. Truth be told, I'm actually here just to remind folks at home, especially my mom who watches these meetings religiously, that I haven't gone anywhere, because I know for the last few weeks, she hasn't seen me sitting in the city clerk seat. We're just simply doing some staff cross-training. But the real reason I'm here is to promote an excellent event that is taking place tomorrow at the library on October 1st, Wednesday. Again, that's tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. at the Central Library Auditorium. Former Glendale Mayor Eileen Gibbons has written a new book providing an informal memoir of life in Washington, D.C. during her grandfather's work as Secretary of Interior under President Eisenhower, based on her grandmother's letters to her friends and family. Gibbons's book is an insider's look at the people and politics in the Eisenhower administration. Douglas and Mabel McKay were part of President Dwight D. Eisenhower's cabinet family, while Doug served as Secretary of the Interior from 1953 to 56. This book is an informal memoir of their life in Washington, D.C. during those years, and it's based on hundreds of letters written by Mabel to family and friends, and gives a very personal inside look at the McKay's experiences, as well as Doug and Mabel themselves. And the book is titled, "I Baked the Cake for Ike and Mammy." Again, this was a book that's been authored by former Glendale Councilmember and Mayor Eileen Gibbons. This book presentation will take place tomorrow, Wednesday, October 1st, 7:00 p.m. at the Glendale Central Library Auditorium at 222 East Harvard Street. If anyone has any questions about the event, they may inquire by calling 818-548-2027.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kasahin. What's next?
Under adoption of ordinances, 7A Ordinance amending Title 30 of the GMC 1995 relating to the precise plan of design overlay zone. This was introduced on September 23rd, 2014, by Councilmember Weaver.
No question, I'll move 7A.
Second.
We have, yes, we have a speaker on this issue, so let's hold off. Aram Kazazian? Well, let's open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I just don't know if the city attorney was able to get anything on what you asked him. I'd like to hear that before I comment.
Sure, I believe he has.
I appreciate it very much.
Can we do, I mean, okay.
If you, it's up to you, but I can...
Yes, yes, please.
Briefly, the precise plan of development, or plan development or plan residential development has been part of our legal landscape, plan landscape in California for these forty years. There's a case called Orinda, a case involving the county, Orinda versus the county of, I have the name of the case's name, because I, I apologize, Orinda Homeowners Association versus Board of Supervisors, and the issue at hand was whether or not the planned residential development with mixed, a mix of uses, a mix of residential uses, both multifamily and a single-family was permissible in a single-family zone through a rezoning, and the court held that that was, as long as the process was not arbitrary and capricious and did not discriminate against properties unreasonably. And in that case, it held that because there were valid legislative purposes behind such a zoning effort and served the general plan's goals, that such a process was lawful under the law. And there are other cases that have upheld conditional zoning and this type of planned development zoning.
And ours is not capricious, it's not discriminatory.
In fact, there are two things I would say to that. One is that the, actually, if you look at the purposes of the ordinance, it's really to provide, it does provide some flexible approaches to the underlying zoning, but to take advantage of site characteristics, take advantage of superior design that a project might propose, and the findings that would be required of the council each time the council desires to approve a PPD are significant, and you have to, there'll have to be a finding that the zone change is notwithstanding, the overall development will still be consistent with the general plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kazazian, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. By the way, the words of the charter are very clear and ambiguous. Now, you have a paper I passed, what I'm reading, it's a very short, not very long one. "Such regulations shall be uniform for each class of building throughout any district, but the regulations in one or more districts may differ from those in the other districts." The language does not say that each class of building shall be treated the same. While every property eligible for the PPD overlays on has the same starting point in term of the procedure and findings, the end result approved by the council constitutes the actual regulations. These regulations have the potential and even likelihood of being different from each PPD zone or property. The very purpose of the PPD zone is to treat property in the same zone district differently. The existing PPD zone regulations provides more restrictive standards to protect the neighborhood. The proposed PPD regulations provide for certain less restrictive standards, which possibility of different and more restrictive standards. possibility of different and more restrictive standards. Contrary to what was said last week, a zone change involving the PPD overlay zone does not have to be complete, comply with the general plan, by the way. In California, the zoning in the charter city does not have to be consistent with the general plan. Besides, if you can get four council votes to change, you can certainly get those votes for amending the general plan, which requires only three votes. I understand the council's desire to have many tools available, possible to provide for quality development, but I think you already have that. The city attorney stated that similar regulations are used in other cities. The staff report mentioned Burbank, Long Beach, Culver City, and Torrance. These are charter cities. However, none of these four cities have the charter provisions relating to zoning standards similar to Glendale, by the way. We read all the charters. Therefore, any of these cities are examples of proposed conditional zoning is legal in Glendale is not relevant at all. Also, any case law that does not specifically relate to the city of Glendale or other California jurisdictions that have the same charter language as Glendale is not relevant. Please repeal all regulations related to the PPD zone. Aram Kazazian, former Borough Zoning Adjustment Member, eight years, and former Building Commission Member for six years. Thank you, and I'd like to present this to the city clerk to have this too as recorded on.
Thank you. That'll become part of the record, yes.
Yeah, you know, I apologize. I should have prefaced my remark by saying that the Orinda case that I just discussed was actually interpreting the Government Code Section 65852, which is nearly identical to our charter provision, talking about uniformity. And the specific issue in that case was, does a planned development or a PPD violate that uniformity requirement? And the case is going to the discussion that the uniformity requirement is really intended to prevent local agencies from unreasonably discriminating against properties, treating them differently without a valid reason. And in that regard, when you have a comprehensive planned development that looks at not just that particular development, but how that development relates to the surrounding development, how it relates to the general plan, the courts have upheld it in that regard. So, my view is that our charter provision, the PPD ordinance will comply with our charter provision, looking at that Orinda case and the other cases that have followed.
And the case specifically addresses a charter provision that's very similar to that, that's to a code section that's very, very.
Nearly identical.
Nearly identical to the charter provision in Glendale's charter. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
So, I just have a few questions. In the future, if council, first, if the PPD passes and council decides to entertain creating a PPD zone, would it be a requirement that there are findings attached to that?
As part of the ordinance, there will be legislative findings. They're in the ordinance, they are in section, and I can read them if you'd like or go through them, but they're pretty thorough, they relate to the general plan, they relate to compatibility with surrounding neighborhood, and with finding that the proposed development has a quality to design, a superior design really, that justifies the reasonable deviations from the code that you'd be approving.
Okay.
And they are in section 38.24.050. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 findings that the council's going to have to make.
Okay, and let me just raise this question since it was put before us. You told me last week, and you just reiterated, that any sort of zone change with a PPD overlay zone would have to relate to the general plan and be consistent with the general plan. So, what Mr. Kazazian has written and what he said is that that is not true. It would not have to comply with the general plan.
And what he's referring to, Councilmember Najarian, is that there is a provision of state law which says that our zoning, charter cities zoning does not have to comply with the general plan. It's generally a requirement for general law cities. However, the findings in this ordinance that you'd be approving would require a finding that the proposed development is substantial conformance with the general plan.
Okay, and then, we had talked about other cities using this development tool. Is our proposed ordinance very similar to the other ones in Torrance and Culver City and Long Beach and Burbank, we said?
I'm not sure, Mr. Agani, my bill's, but I know with a couple that we looked at and my staff looked at, I would say it's similar, and actually, the findings are probably a little bit more detailed than even some of those ordinances require for their PPD ordinances.
So, we're right in line, we're not way out in left field.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Under action items, 8A, Director of Human Resources Regarding Severance Payments to Salaried Employees to be laid off effective October 31st, 2014. 8A1, Motion Authorizing Up to 38 Calendar Days of Severance Payments.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, we had moved through with a handful of layoffs in the past week. This is not a function of balancing budgets, but rather continuing to look at our business processes and finding new and more efficient ways to provide a level of service. To that end, we made these refinements. This round of layoffs is concluded with our meeting and conferring with the respective unions that represent the directly impacted employees. And as we move forward with those negotiations on meeting and conferring on the impact of the layoffs, we have these employees directly affected who are off on administrative leave. Because our rules provide that employees can only be put on administrative leave for disciplinary or other stated reasons, and those reasons do not apply in the case of layoffs, we are asking for your permission to authorize up to 38 calendar days of severance payments that would allow for the appropriate amount of time to go through the meet and confer process and allow us to best understand both the bumping that goes on within our civil service system and/or the separation ultimately pending the meet and confer with the unions. Mr. Doyle is here in the box, he can answer any questions more specific to that.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
So, the number of employees affected?
Councilmember Najarian, there were eight positions affected, affecting obviously eight people, and one additional person was affected through the means of a bump from a, one employee bumping another employee out of a position.
So, these are positions that are being eliminated and not a direct targeting of an employee for removal? In fact.
That's correct.
In fact, the bumping rights, which is a system of seniority and entitlement with an employee's tenure at the city, may very well end up in someone else in some other department being the person who is disengaging from the city's employment.
That's correct.
And let's go back maybe four years. How many employees did the city have?
I would say probably six to seven years ago, we had almost 2,000 salaried employees.
And if this, the elimination of these positions is.
Executed.
That's a bad word. Is instituted, what would our employee count be?
This coupled with the recent separation retirement incentive, I believe, will bring us below 1,500 to the high 1,400s as far as salaried employees.
That's over a 25% reduction.
Yes, sir.
I hope the public realizes that, that our workforce is way down, perhaps the lowest it's been in 15 years, and we're still trying, management is still trying to keep up the high level of service that the residents are used to and expect from the city. And it's not an easy job. I know that they're being asked to do.
Yes, sir, they are.
More, and work harder to keep up the current level of service, so.
Thank you for recognizing that.
And so, this is just to, so I'm clear, back to where we were. This is a 30-day extension on salaries during administrative.
Councilman Najarian, it's, again, we need a mechanism to allow us time to engage in the meet and confer over the effects of these layoffs. So, as Mr. Ochoa said, last week, we noticed these employees and placed them on administrative leave. Many of them worked in the IT department, and there were security concerns and things along those lines, so we felt it was appropriate to place them on administrative leave. The layoffs itself, the actual separations for those who will be leaving the organization will take effect October 31st. So, between last week and October 31st, we're placing, providing this administrative leave.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll move 8A1.
Second.
May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item?
8B, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Grandview Substation Reconstruction Project. 8B1, Motion Awarding Contract to Beta Engineering California LP in an amount not to exceed $13,617,000 plus contingency in the amount of $1,361,700. 8B2, Resolution Appropriating $2,978,700.
Do you decide who's going to present?
I'll throw it over to Mr. Abueg. As you can see, he is not Mr. Zern. Mr. Zern is out sick today. And so, our chief assistant general manager, Mr. Ramon Abueg, will ably give you the brief staff presentation. This will ring rather familiar to the council because the wheel continues to go around to the extent that the council moved forward with a rate plan, a capital improvement plan, a bond sale. One of the key projects in that bond sale was the Grandview Substation rebuild. This came to you previously. We have rejected those bids, but council allowed us the opportunity to negotiate directly with the apparent low bidder, and Mr. Abueg will identify for you how we were able to bring the project into a budget that is suitable for our needs. Ramon?
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, members of the council. We made the same presentation back in July, so I'm not going to go over the same presentation, but this is the substation that we're talking about. It's on San Fernando and Grandview. It was built in 1930, and we are, we have made plans to improve this substation a while ago, but because of our budget constraint at the time, we stopped the project until we got the electric bonds. And the benefits of this project, as we stated before, is we need to provide more capacity in the area to allow for more growth. We also need to improve the reliability by matching the voltages in the area as we go through the conversion and modernizing our system. And some of the benefits also include that we will, by doing that, we will reduce the losses and reduce the cost that we have for paying for lost energy. So, during the negotiation, when we asked you to dispense the bids, the bids came in higher than what we estimated. Our original estimate was based on the 2009 pricing that we did when we did the Glorieta substation. At that time, the luck of the draw, we estimated higher, the project came in lower than what we estimated, and we did not make any adjustments to our estimates at the time. It compounded with the fact that we drew the RFP back in 2012, and we reissued it in 2014, and the bids came in higher. So, in our valuation, the bid came in, we selected to negotiate and asked your permission to negotiate with Beta Engineering. Their bid came in at $17,525,000, and what we did was we negotiated that price, and we got the price down to $13,617,000 without compromising the objective of the project.
How do you negotiate, like, a 35% decrease in?
What we did, we excluded what we think were redundant designs. So, we're looking for the ultimate, I called it the forever and a day design, so we didn't have to touch it again. So, we gave up, we gave up the day, basically, and we're still going to be able to maintain the need for the substation.
The third transformer, for example, that was part of the original design that gave us excess redundancy, so belts, suspenders, and garters. We removed the third transformer, and so we have redundancy, but not to the overwhelming degree that the original spec had. A couple other things I'm sure Ramon can outline.
We also eliminated three feeders because we still have existing. So, what it did is we just have to redesign around it, so we still have the redundancy we're looking for to keep the lights on. And again, just a reminder, what we're trying to do is to modernize the substation so that at the end, this is what it's going to look like. If you recall, we did the same thing with Glorieta Substation, and we've had great success. The number of outages has been minimized, and you don't even know that there's a substation there anymore. One of the objectives, what we're trying to do with our substations, with all the requirements coming from NERC, from the federal government, by keeping the substations low-profile, hidden from the public, we accomplished that by doing this as well.
Ramon, the existing building, is that the section on the far left?
That is correct.
So, you're adding on to the right?
That's correct.
I would recommend that you take this design to the Historic Preservation Commission because the existing building, like a lot of the power buildings around Los Angeles, is a very, very nice building, and I would feel more comfortable if they took a look at this to make sure that it was appropriate.
Yes. Similar to what we did with Glorieta, we worked with our planning department, and I have them bring in the people, the stakeholders that are interested with this project, and we will work through them. So, yes, we will.
Okay. Does that mean you'll take it to the commission? I'm not sure what stakeholder, that's a little different.
In this case, we will go to the commission, yes.
Okay.
And just so we're, if I could ask a question, is this for information only, or are they going to have to approve the design? Or let's be careful with the authority that we're bestowing upon.
That's a great point. I would look for council direction. I would like to go to historic for information only, to the extent that we don't value engineer considering what the price is on the project, what the ultimate look of the building would be. I think a very simple, sleek design like what you see, we can sustain. If it starts to get more intricate, that may increase the cost, which would bring us back to council.
No, no, let's just be clear. You have a building, an existing building on the left side, that I don't know if it's ever been surveyed, but somebody at the city, Jake Platt, should take a look to see if it qualifies for any sort of listing or if it's eligible. That said, anything that you do on the side, it's not a question of them, being a design review board that's going to want to, you know, make it prettier. You just want to do something that doesn't do anything to hurt the building on the left, that's all.
That's correct.
You know, and there are standards, as you know, for building onto historic structures. You just need to be clear that you're within those parameters and give the board that kind of input, and they should have some sort of advisory role in that respect. That's what they're there for. It doesn't mean that they should say, "We want this to be green," or "This to be taller." It's not about that. It's just about making sure you do no harm if it's determined to be a historic structure on the left. If it's not, then they don't, it doesn't have to go to them. But I suspect that it is.
Yeah.
And given that, you want to make sure that nothing's done in this renovation or addition to hurt, to hurt a resource.
Correct. And we have been consulting with Mr. Platt, by the way, along this way, even before we got to this point. We have been consulting with him. We have finally liked the design, and we will subject, we will be working with him.
Okay, thank you.
So, is this, has this been surveyed? Is this a historic structure?
It's currently not a historical building.
Well, it's, wait a second. It's not a historic building because we haven't put it on the historic register. That's very different.
That's correct.
We don't know whether it's a historic building and hasn't been surveyed. Or has it because the San Fernando corridor was at one point?
But our goal is to preserve the building.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just hope it's for information. I've driven by that building for over 60 years, and I hate looking at it. This looks nice. So, in my view, in San Fernando Road, with no residences around, next to two major streets, I'll vote to override anything the historic district does of trying to protect what's there.
I live on Grandview, I got to say, this looks nice.
Again, it's not a question of what looks nice. There's laws about resources, whether they're natural resources or historic resources. We don't, let's not get ahead of ourselves. We don't know if this is a historic resource. I'm just saying we need to be sensitive with our buildings, the same way that we expect all property owners of older buildings to be sensitive and to make sure before they do a renovation that they're not dealing with a historic resource, and if they are, to do it in a way that does not diminish that resource. We should follow the same rules that we put on all of our other property owners.
Which we will.
But here's the problem with that. This came to us four months ago, five months ago. There was a bid made. There was some sentiment that the bid was too high. You've gone back and you've renegotiated with Beta. You've gone back and you've renegotiated with Beta, and you've got your, presumably your scope of plans, your scope of design. Now we're facing the problem, it's a problem of timing for me. If we wanted at the very beginning to say, "Let's run this by, and let's ask what historic preservation wants to preserve, what they like, what they don't like," that's okay. But we're at the very end of this whole process now. We're ready to sign the contract, I presume, waiting for our approval here. Now we're putting the brakes on the whole thing and going back, which may change the bid, and it might be just fine. HPC might say it's fine the way it is, but I think we're running the risk, should they make some suggestions to change and to move this that way, that we're back to the beginning. That's a lot of staff time and all that. So if there's concerns of historic preservation, the time to make that was maybe four months ago when we first learned that this was gonna be rebuilt.
Mr. Garcia.
If I may, this is just a rendition. This is just a vision of what we think it would look like. We haven't gone through the actual design.
It's a nice rendition.
Can I just maybe a comment and a question? What I'm hearing is that you want us to look at it and determine whether or not it's a historic resource, and if it is, you want us to take it to the board. And if it is a historic resource, the commission would have to look at it and comply with the interiors, Secretary of Interior. If it's not, it wouldn't be and wouldn't go to the commission. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Exactly.
And that's fine.
This is what we demand of every property owner in the city who's doing any sort of work.
Just so we're clear, if Mr. Platt and his team working with him come to the conclusion that it's not a historic resource, then we're okay not taking it to the commission?
That's right.
Okay.
And is that available to the council?
Look folks.
How do we determine something historic?
It's a relatively objective test, you know, Mr. Platt looking at studies, looking at whatever studies have been done. I'm not sure if there was intent ever to look at hiring a consultant, probably not. But whatever data that Mr. Platt has available to him, he'll use that data. If he needs more data, he'll seek it out. But if he comes to, it's a relatively objective standard to determine whether or not it's a historic resource. And if the conclusion is, at Mr. Platt and Mr. Agani working with our office, you know, in terms of legally, it determines that, comes to the conclusion it's not a historic resource, although it may have some historic elements, it wouldn't go to the commission. If it was, and then it went to the commission, we would have to anyway comply with the Secretary of Interior standards. And so I think that what I'm hearing from Councilmember Friedman is that just comply with those standards if it's indeed historic.
Exactly, and you're doing an addition. You're not changing the building, so this shouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah.
But there are still standards, and I wanna make sure that we follow all the same rules that we put on any other property owner. And Mr. Najarian's point is well taken. I hope that the city does, whenever it's working with any of its buildings, take this into account. You know, it shouldn't be up to me to tell you that, and it sounds like it wasn't because you've been working with planning, but let's just always be mindful of that with our own properties.
Mr. Najarian?
I'm just concerned, let's think worst-case scenario. This goes to HPC and Mr. Platt, and they run it by the federal standards. And they say that building, the existing building, by itself should be preserved and maintained, and not have a extension or an annex to it. Then what do we do as a city? We say we can't build the electric plant because in and of itself, you know, it has its own integrity?
I don't believe so.
They don't have the ability to do that, and the Secretary of Interior allows for additions to historic structures, so they'd have no grounds for making a determination.
The overriding consideration would be the security of the power plant. So to the extent that there's an existing building, and it's a nice, very simple, classic type of art deco building, as I say, we can take it to historic. My guess is that they will look at it, and working with planning, likely, I would hope, bless the restoration work that's intended, and the addition that would be an annex that you see represented here. It's a very simple construction, but if there were an issue, we would want to address that issue, which means we'd be coming back to council anyway.
Okay.
Want a motion?
Is there a motion?
Move A1 and 2.
Is the motion appropriate at this time?
Yes.
Move A1 and 2.
Second.
Well, I'm not sure why it's appropriate then. What if they say there needs to be some changes?
You said the exterior hasn't been designed.
We have to start the design, so again, get the details to me to work with Mr. Platt's group. Like I said, they've been consulted with the direction we're going, but we still haven't prepared the design, and we have to engage our consultant.
I mean, this is a design build, so it's sort of...
Yeah, but, no, it's not a design build. You've already gone through the standards, and you've penciled out what you don't want.
It is.
How do you know, I mean, isn't there a budget for the exterior?
This is just conceptual. We haven't gone through any detailed design yet.
Ramon, I like that. Just one person's opinion.
Seems weird, but that's okay.
I mean, we do have this as a design build contract. The idea is to come together with an overall concept that the contractor takes on at their risk, the benefit of the design build, to the extent that there is an issue that would ultimately stymie the project, either by historic preservation or some other unforeseen circumstance, we, as the city attorney indicates, there is a set of steps that we will have to go through regardless. I don't know that anything that's been discussed here today stops us from moving forward with the contract.
Okay, so do we have a second?
We do.
Second.
Yes. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Buegg. Next item, please.
8C City Treasurer Regarding Investment Policy. 8C1, Resolution Adopting Policy for Fiscal Year 2014-2015.
Thank you. Mr. Manukin?
Would you both?
Mr. Mayor, would you?
Would you like to do them both together, sir?
Yeah, I think so. That's how we usually address it, both together.
Mr. Mayor, your pleasure.
Yes, Mr. Truett.
Would you like us to read both then?
Do what?
What's, I'm sorry, what's, oh, it hasn't been read yet, please, go ahead.
8CD would be City Treasurer Regarding Annual Review of the City Portfolio. 8CD1, Motion Accepting Report for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2014.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and Councilmembers. Rafi Manukin, City Treasurer. It's been a year since my last presentation to the city council, it seems like yesterday, but today we come to you at 8C1 with a recommendation for the approval of the resolution adopting the policy, the investment policy with no changes for fiscal year 2014-2015. And at 8D1, we will make the presentation for the annual review of the city portfolio. Today's presentation will be made by a key member of the city treasurer's team, Guy Amory, who's been with the city treasurer for a number of years, and I believe you are seeing her for the first time here on the dais, so. Yeah, you're up.
Thank you.
Matt, just a quick, make, no changes, right?
No changes to the...
Changes.
I don't know how much we need since...
No changes to the investment policy, but this is your portfolio that is...
8C1?
8C1, yes.
Right, let's get into the record and for no other reason, let's have our residents see what the policy is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Guy Amory. I'm the Assistant City Treasurer. Tonight I will be presenting the 2013-2014 Annual Report, which is the recap of last year's performance for the city portfolio. The first slide before you is the investment philosophy, which most of you, or probably all of you, are aware of, but for the viewing public, it's basically the philosophy that we use. We are guided by the prudent person rule, which is basically good judgment, common sense, care and conduct, and due diligence will be exercised. The investment objectives would be safety, liquidity, and yield of the investments, and risk tolerance. The volatility of the principal is not permitted. The rate of return, the policy objective for the rate of return should be at least, should at least meet the annual total return on a three-month treasury bill. And on this slide, you will see that the yellow line above is the average rate of return for the city's portfolio, and the red line represents the three-year, the three-month treasury bill. And you will notice that it exceeds the city's investment objectives. This slide shows an annual comparison of the portfolio's performance for 2012, 13, and 2014. The portfolio totaled 381 million point five for 2000, at the end of 2014. That's up 9 million from 372.8 last year. Interest earnings went up about 100,000 from 3.2 million. The rate of return also went up four basis point at .88%, up from .84%. The weighted average maturity is 22.7 months, and we like to keep it below 24 months, which is less than two years. This basically is the average duration, which measures the sensitivity of our portfolio. Although the year did not end at 1% as what we would like, it is worth reporting that rates have started to pick up since then. Currently, the portfolio rate of return is at 1.04% as of September of 2014. This slide shows rate comparisons for the two years and as compared to other benchmarks. At the top of the bar graph is the city's rate of return, already mentioned, .88% as compared to last year of .84. Below that is the state's local agency investment fund, which is also known as the LAIF, which you all are familiar. The rate of, their rate of return fell six basis points from, from .30% to .24 basis points. Below LAIF is the two-year treasury's rate of return went up 11 basis points from 30, .36, up from .25 the previous year. So just a quick analysis of the rate comparison, the city's portfolio is 64 basis points above LAIF, and it's 52 basis points above the two-year treasuries. Exhibit D shows the asset allocation. This pie chart shows the composition of the city's portfolio. This is where the dollars are invested. Let me focus your attention to the longer-term composition. I know, I apologize, maybe you might not be able to see it, so I'm gonna try my best to show you here. Starting from the right, the blue and the red area of the pie chart, 33% of the total portfolio are invested in federal agency, 25 in callables, and 8% in non-callables. That would be, the blue, would be, the blue area would be the non-callables, also known as the bullet, and the red would be the callables. Are you, I'm sure, I'm sure you can see that. Over to the purple area of the pie chart, down left, let's see. 18% are allocated to corporate notes. Up above, around the 11 o'clock area, which is the, let's see, the light, I would say light purple, almost, yeah, light purple above, you will notice that that is the California state and municipal bonds. And right next to it would be the pink, or the peach area, which is about 1%, 7% to the state and municipal bonds, and 1% to other state obligations. Basically, those are the long-term end of the portfolio. That's one to five years. Over to the left-hand side, you will notice the, are the shorter terms, less than one year. You have the LAIF down below, the, which is the green area, that would be 26, I apologize, that would be the, yes, the 26% and 9% would be for the LA County pool. Over to the left, you will see the negotiable CDs, the commercial paper, and the money market. Those are all very short-term. Exhibit E is the investment maturities. This slide shows an annual comparison based on maturities. You will notice that at the investments, at the five-year range have gone down, and the three-to-four-year range have gone up. This indicates that the spreads are better in these maturity range. Simply put, this is where the good buys are. Since rates are expected to rise, we didn't want to lock in or tie up funds in the longer end of the portfolio. Exhibit F is the total city investments to cash on hand. You will notice that the first top of the slide is just a repeat of the previous slides, and the cash on hand, you will notice that at the end of June 2013, the cash on hand was 1,006, whereas at the end of June 30 of 2014, it went up to 38,002. This is common, this changes on a monthly basis depending on what's in the hopper. Currently, this number is down to approximately about 20 million. Exhibit G, this slide is all of the, this slide shows all of the portfolios the city treasurer manages. There are a total of six portfolios. It shows the annual comparison for the last two years. At the top, you will notice, again, it's a repeat of previous slides, and the next five are your successor agencies, the GRA tax allocation bonds, 2010 and 2011, and you have your water and your electric revenue bonds. You will notice that the numbers, most of the numbers have gone down, and that's mainly because that, that would be the payments that were made in conjunction with the project. The tax allocation bond, 2011, slightly went up, and you will notice that that will be the, that is the interest earnings. So that concludes my presentation tonight. Just, just a quick last-minute comment. The portfolio is safe, the portfolio is liquid, and we continue to look for investment opportunities without compromising the safety and liquidity of the portfolio.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
The LAIF return is pretty low, .3%, and ours is what, .8, almost .9?
Yes.
So do they have a more conservative investment policy than we do?
They work off of the same rules as we do, but they have a different mission. Because they're obligated to their pool participants, they have to keep it short. They have to keep it liquid so that they can meet the demands of the agencies and the participants of the pool. So yes, they invest a lot in short-term instruments, and they are, their weighted average maturity is six to eight months, whereas ours would be two years.
22 months.
22, 24 months, yes.
And there's a lot of discussion on the bonds. What do we pay to our bondholders? Do you know that, or is that a Bob Elliott?
Yes, I would have to defer to our finance director.
Who knows that? It's gotta be at least a couple percent, right?
Mr. Manukin? The range anywhere from 1 to 4.5%.
So is it possible to... So is it possible to buy our own bonds?
That's actually a good question that...
It is, Councilmember Najarian, Mayor Sinanian. It is possible to buy our own bonds, but that decision would have to be made by the City Council. If, if we were to issue new bonds, I think that would be a decision that you would make, that I would recommend to you to make that decision. The, the investment portfolio currently only allows us to invest up to five years. And generally, the bonds that are issued by municipalities are anywhere from one year, two year, three years, to up to 30 years. So to go beyond the five years, it would need council approval, and that would be coming to you for approval.
Because we're paying someone else that 4% or that 3%. So the issue maybe is on how long the maturity that we're requiring.
Correct.
But doesn't, doesn't the risk go up? As you go to longer term, the risk increases.
Well...
We're the risk.
We're talking about our own, our own bonds.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Rock solid.
But our liquidity would suffer, wouldn't it?
But our liquidity, liquidity could suffer. We would be tying up the bonds for, or part, parts of the bonds for 30 years. And I have been having discussions with Mr. Elliott regarding the same issue. And I'll be forwarding the discussion to our city attorney for an analysis of that exact same question.
Yeah, I look, I, since you're doing it, I'd say I'd be interested in seeing what the options are, because it's our own money, you know, we're paying someone else. And as long as we can fit it in our portfolio in terms of the maturity, it would be a good deal.
Well, isn't that the issue? If you have reserves that are only getting you a couple percent interest, why not just borrow your own reserves?
Right.
Rather than issue a bond? I mean, there's that option too. So, but again, right, it's the analysis of how long you need to borrow the money and what, how much interest you would make over time.
Right. And, and the requirement by charter, how much, how much reserve you require to keep in, in the account before the investments that you do. But that's, that's something for the city attorney to analyze and get back to you. And you can authorize me or not authorize me to do so. But one thing I would like to add regarding that same issue is that the, the bonds that are currently issued would be very expensive to repurchase and to invest in those bonds. However, if there are new bonds that we're going to issue in the future, that is something that we can look at. Because the bonds that are already issued, we would have to pay market rate for them. If we were issuing new bonds at that point, we can certainly look at this issue and, and consider whether we should invest in our own city bonds or not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manukian. So do we have, will someone move on C1?
Move A, C1.
Second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. And D1?
Councilmember.
Got a motion on D1?
I'll move.
Okay.
A second.
Okay.
Did he read it?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine. Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes, thank you. And what's next?
Twelve oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items not a part of the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. And we have two speaking cards. First is Carol Simon, followed by RB Barcelian. Hello, Ms. Simon, please state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Yes, good evening, I'm Carol Simon. I've lived in Glendale my entire life, and I've seen all the changes. I can bring before you tonight, I want to ask you to please consider the ban that you have on artificial grass in the front yard. We're in very different times, very different times. We are in an extreme drought that could go on for three years. I personally know how the quality has changed in the years. It, from the time you put the ban on it, you could not tell the difference if you saw it. And I, I know it's not for everyone, but I live in the 91202 area code. And the homes that are letting their grass die and that are putting rocks and cactus on Spanish homes, it really offends me. I don't blame them, I understand the water issue. But it, it doesn't go with the city. I can't imagine the Gone With The Wind House on Kenneth Road having rocks and, and, you know, cactus growing. And I, we are the, one of the few cities left in LA that does not allow it. And I just think times have changed. We're in a drastic place right now, and I, I would like you to reconsider it. And I can get you samples, I can, anything that you would want. But I, I think, just like the windows, things are different. It's not the same, things aren't the same. So that's my, my thing tonight would just be if you could look at it, talk about it, that would be great.
We are. Thank you, Ms. Simon. It's been, yes, it's been, we've, we've asked our staff to prepare a report. We're going to revisit that issue at Mr. Najarian's request.
Yeah, because it is, I actually spoke to a city, somebody in the city of Glendale on the phone, and he said to me, you know, I was at a home in Malibu, and I spent the whole day there. And it wasn't until I was leaving that I knew that we were on artificial grass. So that's what I hope you consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
That also made the front page of the Daily News a few days ago.
Well, it's sort of a...
Really?
Yeah. This issue's very pertinent right now. Okay, thank you. Mr. RB Barcelian? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city members, council members. My name is RB Barcelian. My wife and I own Ariana Medical Pharmacy on the corner of Broadview and Verdugo Road. This is a newly built building about four or five years ago, the glass building. About a few months ago, we petitioned to the city, and the city kindly installed green zones in front of our pharmacy because of the traffic we have. We face Verdugo Roads, our customers are very much happy to be able to park on the side of the street and come into the pharmacy, do their business, and be out very quickly. We're very happy to get that 30-minute zoning. But yesterday, much to our surprise, we noticed that the transit was posting a tollway signs for some testing to be done today. When we questioned what the testing was for, and the response was, the city or the transit is considering moving the bus station right in front of our pharmacy. We were taken by that. I mean, that was a very, very big shock to us because that would be detrimental to our business because we strive on providing quick service, and our customers will literally go away, go to CVS or other big players because of the fact that the parking is going to be an issue. So the reason I'm here before you today, I don't know what stage that study is at, at this point, but I would like to present my strong opposition to that idea. We're a street-facing retail business, and that parking is crucial to our survivability. My suggestion is for, for the transit to look maybe at other location. I, I think looking around 3,500 block of Verdugo Road is, to my eyes, a more viable location, both in economical sense and I think in, in safety sense. Because I think the reason the transit is moving the bus up there is because they want it, they want to make it easier for the buses to make a left turn into Honolulu. But that would be crossing three lanes in just a matter of a few hundred feet. So I think I just wanted to just be before you today and just voice my concern and have that reviewed for a better alternative. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barcelian. Mr. Ochoa, can we have someone else?
Well, let me speak to that, if I can. This is, this sort of highlights the difficulties in changing bus routes and bus stops. And there was a strong voice of support from members of the Montrose Shopping Park to maintain a bus line down Honolulu. And one of the ways that that was going to be possible was by putting a stop somewhere along Verdugo so the bus could drop there and then make its, its turn onto Honolulu. I was not aware that that was a finalized decision. I understood that was going to be coming back to the Metro Board. It has not come back to the Metro Board yet. So I'm, I'm curious as to how they got such a head start on that issue, if that's in fact what they're doing. It may be just for temporary purposes for the buses themselves to, the bus operators to say whether it would be possible to make that three-lane change and then go westbound on Honolulu. That could be what's going on. But as far as I know, at the board level, there has been no definitive action which would place that stop there. But there's been a lot of action by the folks in the Montrose Shopping Park saying, please, we want that bus to continue down. And I think this is all, all related to each other.
And if I may add, I would have no opposition to that. I think I would be a supporter of that. I think I'm a, I'm a big fan of the Montrose area and the shopping. In fact, we recently purchased a home there, and our business is there. So, and we're quite frequent visitors of Montrose area. So absolutely supporter of Montrose and everything that they, they represent. However, I believe if studies can be done to perhaps move the bus a little bit further down, maybe 3,500 block, if that would be an option, that would be greatly appreciated. And it would not harm businesses in, in making that transition.
Yes, can we please take a serious look at 3,500 block?
It's full advice of the Metro folks.
Compliment.
Michael.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. What's next? Next, please. We have new business?
Yes.
We have new business, yes.
Business? New business? Yes.
Mr. Weaver. I'd like to move that the city count, that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Colentono, Highsmith, and Watley, P.C., to represent the interests of the city regarding threatened litigation over the city of Glendale's water rate plan adopted on July 29, 2014. Retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a budget and fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine. Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with Greg Newmark with the law firm of Myers, Nave, Ryback, Silver, and Wilson to provide legal services in connection with potential litigation expected to be filed against the city of Glendale in United States District Court. The name of the action, the other parties, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for providing the legal services.
Second.
Hey, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine. Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. And that's the end of our new business?
Sure.
And we're adjourned at 7:46 PM.